Just before we start, we still need to turn on the camera to see the actual, that camera's on for the, to see the actual board members.
Yeah, I was gonna say, sure. April 30th. Twenty twenty four meeting. Excuse me next time. Again, April 30th, twenty twenty four meeting of the Flumaker Town Planning Board. Um, please write as you may be able to. And I write to agents. Oh, we are a nice sense of our. To all the influential states, what nation. If this all, we will not be just this all. Yeah, many. This meeting is held pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, so adequate and electronic services proceeding has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter and County Democrat, going here, newspaper, honor about February 1st, 2024, and January 30th, 2024, and April 4th, 2024, for the cancellation of the April 16th, and the addition of the April 30th meeting. In addition, notice of the meeting was closed at the Borough 20th Municipal Building, located at 38th and Avenue, and any handicapped or accessible individuals to go to. Both the domain is available website, provided to the municipal club, and distributed to all persons if any requests and purposes the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video, or maybe broadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be done in terms of issues that are relevant, or the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. All right, um, can we take the roll call, please?
Mayor Carroll is excused. Councilwoman Fasaro? Yeah. Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Giffen? Yeah. Mr. Hill?
There.
Mr. Dashna, I think is running late.
I'm here and I'm remote.
You are remote.
I'm driving, I'm driving in, yeah, I'm gonna listen.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Yes, here.
Ms. Laitman?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Mario is. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr. Eccle?
I'm here.
Mr. Cho?
Here.
Ernie Kaczynski? There. Mr. Ian Hill?
Hmm.
Is McManus? Here. Mr. Troutman?
Here.
And Roy Curtis to home.
Apologies, I'm here.
All right, item one on our agenda is the public comment. This is specifically for item not on the current agenda. Is there anybody wishing to make a comment? Being on in person, we don't have any raised hands online, so moving on, um, going to item two, their comments. Give over, we didn't receive any comments that wants to read out from our.
Yeah.
Okay, so item three, council?
Uh, nothing of significance to anymore.
Okay, thank you. Item four, HPC comments, Dennis?
We're meeting next week, so I just have one item, a reminder, we're having the historic house tour planned for Saturday, June 1st, from 11:00 to 5:00. Tickets are on sale, they're on our borough website, as well as the HPC website, and they're available through Eventbrite. If anyone wants to volunteer for the day of event, we're looking for volunteers, you get a free ticket, so just let us know if you're interested. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, professional report.
All right. I have a brief update on catalyst. Um, there will be a motion heard before it's currently scheduled for April 12th, which I believe is this Friday, um, to have a receiver appointed. Once the receiver is appointed, there will be a auction spread for the property. That typically could take anywhere from 60 to 90 days. Um, I think we talked about before, the whole thing that at that point, another billboard company will come in, take over and complete the project. If that doesn't happen, then the foreclosing companies, since they are also in that business, uh, would undertake the project and kind of appoint somebody or hire somebody as with itself, however it would work, but, um, there is your light, and a piano becomes.
Something's moving.
Exactly.
Right, sure. So do we need to, um, I don't want to say too much, you know, want to, but the basic item that we mentioned to us.
I mean, to watch on that, just to remind the board of what we kind of have.
I do want to look at the actual holding, you know, a little more detail, because it does seem to be very fact specific. Um, but I'll say that that was distributed, I did find it interesting, seemed like it was one of the first times that it's been extrapolated out that far. And, I mean, you know, ever since I've been with this board, I've said, you know, when you're in these positions, I don't want to say you lose your right to make comments, but it's always the better course of error not to. And I think this is a perfect example of, you know, while it might not have been technically legal or, or wrong, you could see what the ramifications could be.
Absolutely.
I'll look at it in a little more detail, if there's something else I need to advise on.
Thank you.
If anybody has questions, just let me know.
Yeah, feel free to reach out, kind of your personal questions about how it affects your comments and work on the board. Good to see. Yes. All right, um, Seth, anything?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, last week I submitted updated, or updated, uh, memo on the updated Fair Housing Act. We had really significant changes to the Fair Housing Act in New Jersey, it sets forth, uh, changes for how the affordable housing obligation will be generated, how it can be satisfied, and then the process for doing so, with the, the highlight being that the council on affordable housing has been abolished. Most of the activities, monitoring, et cetera, will occur through reports with some powers sent to the Department of Community Affairs. So I provided a memo indicating overview of what's in that bill, and ultimately, I'm recommending to every municipality that I work for, that I think now is the time to start thinking about this. And, uh, there's nothing urgent, we don't have a deadline, it can still, uh, January 31st of next year, which just sets forth the obligation, we have a housing plan deadline for the end of June 2025. So it feels like we have a lot of time, but it's gonna go very.
I know that time. So is this something where we have to make amendments to our master plans?
Yeah. Yeah, my expectation is that the borough, uh, presumably the borough decides to, in terms of the bigger process, it is voluntary, technically, although very heavily incentivized. Um, so presuming you want to participate in this, that means that we'll have to do a, a fourth round, the Housing and Fair Share Plan, and presumably some ordinances and considerations that will include.
Right. Before we get some spare meetings.
Yeah.
Doesn't happen, yeah, I keep hoping it's gonna happen soon, but we're still, thank you. Um.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, approval, item six, approval of minutes from the March 26th, 2024 meeting. Those were distributed to everybody there, where they have the chance to reprove them. Uh, any comments or amendments that need to be made on those, if anyone? I'm seeing any, oh, wait. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll move. Awesome.
Thank you. I'm gonna take the roll.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Laitman?
Yes.
Swingle?
Melissa, can you hear us? Did you hear the minute?
Sorry, I was having trouble on meeting.
Can you, uh, vote on acceptance of the minutes from March 26th, please?
Yes.
Redwell?
Yes.
Thanks, Simon. All right, item seven is Resolution Golden Heart and LLC, application 2023-08. Is this a week table in this one, or we got this one?
We do have this one, yeah. I'm actually going to make one change, uh, I spoke with council earlier, and on page five, second paragraph down, uh, I'm going to amend the last sentence of that paragraph, starting with the facility. To read, the facility would also operate similarly to a school or educational facility, in that it would most likely not be operational in the event of inclement weather and on federal holidays. I think that does better explain exactly what happened as opposed to what I had there, so with that change, it didn't work.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the resolution, um, as amended?
So moved, go.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second, Hill.
Thank you. Can we take the roll, please, um, I think? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Giffen? Yes. Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
Ms. Laitman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, item eight, Resolution Hunter and T House LLC, this one?
That will be this.
Take land until the next meeting with a agreement from.
I didn't say so, but I wrote down, yes.
Thank you. Efficient. Um, we're almost there, I understand, right? Um, okay, here we go. Item nine, public hearing. Central Station LLC, one council member, this is a.
A D value.
Yeah, B value. Thank you, um. Do all, I think, anyway, that you can, I'll give you a motion from that. Uh, so this is public hearing for Central Station LLC, application 2023-05, lot 44, lot 7. Point seven, Main Street, continued from October 3rd, October 24th, 2023, and February 12th, and March 12th, 2024. Major eliminate and final site, an application with Houston, twelve variances and waivers. So where this is a continuance, so do we need to, um, we need to go through the items where we're checking conflicts and swearing any witnesses on all of these issues?
You don't need to check topics again, we don't have any new letters.
Okay.
Um, we will need to swear in any new witnesses that we have not sworn in before, go back and check.
Right.
Um, but the one other thing I just did want to do, just for the record, there were a number of other reports that came in since the last meeting that we had, so we just wanted to mark them from the records, and there's, was a number of them, and a lot of them are updated, um, so they don't necessarily all say new information, but just want to mark them for the record. So, uh, PB5, I have the engineering review. Um, this is technical report number two, dated January 22nd. PB6 is the, uh, HPC memo dated January 29th, 2024. PB7 is Miss McManus' updated report, um, dated October 2nd, 2023, revised February 7th, 2024. PB8 is another report revised, uh, from Miss McManus, revised through March 4th, 2024. PB9 is technical report number three from, uh, Mr. uh, Clerco, and that's dated March 9th, 2024. PB10, um, I have, uh, Miss McManus' report revised through April 4th, 2024. Um, I have Mr. Troutman's report, uh, PB11 dated Octo-, uh, April 5th, 2024, I think there's no date of that one, was October 3rd. And I have PB12, uh, which is a report dated November 10th, 2023, and I don't recall, Mr. Ronger, if you put this in the record, but I'll just do it just in case. Um, this is the, uh, water and sewer plan review from the Boroughs Engineers, then Mr. Burnick, dated again, October 10th, 2024.
Thank you very much.
And one thing I was just thinking to check, because we are missing a few members, we want to check where four or more which alternates, so then who's eligible to vote before we get going.
Oh, that's good. So do we have anybody who knew? Pretty good. Uh, Ms. Giffen and, uh, Ms. Rong. I believe I have one of those. Everybody else. Mr. Campion? Ms. Giffen? Mr. Hill? Dashna? Laitman, Mr. Semino? And Ms. Swingle, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Um, we would only, yeah, we would only be, uh, seven members, and, uh, we were that young.
We have seven full members, we're good. Excellent, thank you. Check, we'll get going. All right. Mr. Boba, floor is yours.
Thank you. So, um, we're here for Central Station LLC, and we've been here a couple of times before, and this is one of those applications where, um, the process has worked, for, I think, the board and for the applicant for coming up with a really big project, that's a real, uh, plus for the community. There's been a good dialogue, not only with, uh, the board members and professionals and the public, to address their concerns about this application. And we've actually narrowed it down, uh, to the relief that we're requesting is only going to be the D1 use variance relief to allow for residential on the first floor, um, instead of just the first, second, and third floors, instead of commercial on the first and residential on the second and third floors, which would have been permitted. Uh, that's as to the back building, the front building will, uh, have a commercial on the first floor and residential on the second and third floor. Um, what we have done is submitted revised plans that have been vetted by the HPC, and we've addressed most of their concerns, I think, in their, in that submission. And we have a follow-up report, and we're going to have testimony to, uh, supplement, to talk about some of the other things that they just wanted to know about, and we're going to provide that information. Um, probably the biggest change was that we were previously asking for a rear yard variance, because we had a seventh unit that was located within the rear yard setback, and we've removed that seventh unit. So now there will only be six units in that back building, and now we no longer require a C variance for the rear yard. So before, we were asking for a D variance and a C variance, and now we've eliminated the C variance. Um, that takes into consideration some of those neighbors' concerns about the size of the building being close and, uh, to the rear property line and what their viewscape would be. We're sensitive to that. Um, and I, I think by removing that seventh unit, we're bringing the project even more into conformity. Um, and it's interesting, because the, the only use, the, the only relief we're required is for that D variance relief. But your most recent master plan, Mr. Block will present more testimony in support of planning. But on page 36 of your master plan, and this is referenced in Miss McManus' report, it talks about the DB district, and it says that the district standard should be amended to allow first-floor residential uses as a conditional use. First-floor residential uses in the downtown area, uh, in the downtown are appropriate where they do not disrupt first-floor active commercial uses. As such, first-floor residential uses may be appropriate where they do not face a public street, or where the unit occupies a minimal area to accommodate the residential entrance. Due to the presence of existing residents in, in the DB2 district, conditions for first-floor residential uses should be more flexible in this district than the DB district. That's exactly what we're doing with this proposal, because, um, this building does not face the public street. Or the building that does face the public street does have commercial on the first floor. We're, um, following the recommendations that have been noted in your master plan, by having a more flexible residential use on the first floor. So that's the legal spiel in the beginning. Um, what I'd like to do is call Mr. Rutner in, uh, who's already here, he was already sworn before, and have him highlight to you what the changes are in the plans. So I think my camera needs to be turned on, because I'm not seeing myself unless you're seeing me. Am I moving?
I'll be doing that.
Oh, I can just roll you to kind of, sorry about that.
I'm getting pretty good. Actually, we.
You're right, we need to see your, um, answer phrase.
Start the video. I keep myself muted.
Can we, um, include the, your witness, Emma, too, as well? Seeing.
Planza?
Yes.
Well, I'm. You should be able to. Can you?
Should I screen that for later? Oh, it is.
Yeah, I just put that on.
Oh.
Oh, I forgot.
Good. It's a lot less, most more fast travel, so.
So Mr. Rutgerang, if you would please advise the board as to what changes we've made to the plan and highlight. They're very familiar with the project, but let's limit our testimony to what we've changed and how we address some of the comments of the board's professionals.
Thank you. So the plan that I have is being shared with the board, uh, this is sheet number four of the site plan set. Um, and this is sort of preliminary and final site plan. And it's dated May 25th, 2023, um, last revised March 25th, 2023.
This is the plan that was submitted, that we're not, it's not colorized or changed in any way, that it has to be marked as an, another exhibit, correct?
Correct, this is the same.
February 2024.
Yes, my mind, 2024 is the revision. Um, and what this plan shows are the revisions that the applicant has made to the project. Um, the front building, which is the mixed-use building, which is located along the front edge of the property, no changes have been made to that building in terms of size or square footage. The second building, which is the townhouse building, which is located towards the rear. This is the building that once, or the previous plan, so presented to the board, this building consisted of units, and the seventh unit was almost entirely, or actually was entirely within the rear segment line. What the applicant has done is to remove that seventh unit, which used to be located approximately here, in order to eliminate the rear yard variance. What we did was slightly change the internal configuration of the project. Um, previously, the parking area that's located behind the rear, behind the, excuse me, behind the mixed-use building, the loading zone used to be located on the northeast side of this parking area. What we have done is to flip the loading zone, the loading zone is now located immediately adjacent to the rear of the mixed-use building. What that allowed us to do is to shrink that overall parking area slightly, and move, move the rear building a little bit closer towards the front of the property, in order to provide the required minimum rear yard of 50 feet. In addition to reducing the unit count, reducing the number of units also allowed the applicant to reduce the number of parking spaces that are required. Again, the mixed-use building has not changed. Um, however, reducing the unit to six instead of seven allowed the applicant to reduce the parking requirement on site by thirty. Instead of thirty-two parking spaces, which were previously required, the applicant now only requires 29 parking spaces, three of which will be EV parking. Um, the EV parking spaces are proposed along the western east side, and also along this northerly corner of the parking area adjacent to the mixed-use building. These EV spaces are going to be EV-ready. Um, details of the proposed EV charging units have been added to the plans.
We're conforming with parking requirements of the borough, correct?
Correct. In addition to the changes to the site layout, we were also able, with the additional space provided to the north of the mixed-use, uh, townhouse building, we were able to enlarge the stormwater management system that's required for the project. Originally, um, the proposal that we had, we were meeting the peak rate reduction requirements, however, the volume, the post-developed conditions run of volume increased slightly, which required a more detailed downstream analysis of the project. In accordance with Mr. Clerco's recommendation, another option, which is available for the applicant, is to look and analyze the two 10 and 100-year storm events, and provide the required reduction, 50% for the 10-year storm, 25%, excuse me, 50% for the two-year storm, 25% for the 10-year storm, and 20% for the 100-year storm. The revised stormwater management system design that's been provided to the board meet all of those requirements. So in addition to actually reducing the amount of impervious coverage on site, the applicant has been able to meet all of the stormwater management criteria that's established in the ordinance, and also within RSIS. This project actually results in a net benefit to the overall community and the downstream properties as a whole. Currently, the site is about 66% covered with various types of impervious coverage, gravel, pavement, concrete, buildings. And they all discharge in a northerly direction through this property, through the adjoining property, and down into the stream that's located north behind the dwellings on, on Bonnell Street. The applicant's proposal actually reduces the impervious coverage by about 1,500 square feet, or about four and a half percent below what currently exists on the property. So overall, this project is going to have a net positive benefit to the downstream properties, because it reduces the peak rate of runoff that's currently seen by those properties where the stream is located, within the rear yard on Bonnell. And it also reduces the volume of runoff into that existing, um, stream.
So let's, let's say that in, in non-engineer terms, but people terms. So we're reducing the impervious cover that's existing on the site now, correct?
Yes.
We are taking care of the, um, stormwater by even making the proposed basin and stormwater management larger than what was originally proposed, correct?
Yes.
We're, uh, reducing the amount, the volume of water that's coming from the site as it does now, correct?
Correct.
And we're reducing the rate that the water leaves the site now than what it does now, correct?
Correct.
And we're actually, you've already testified to it previously, where we are using a, um, improving the storm drainage on the adjoining lot, and, um, working on the borough system to allow for water to flow better through that existing system, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And essentially, those are the changes that the applicant has proposed in the revised plans.
Let's talk a little bit about the water and sewer rating, and burning proposal, and some of the requested improvements that they passed forward, and what we're willing to do.
So can you review my, that the applicant is obtained from Remington and Burmick? Um, in terms of the water supply to the property, the applicant is fine with the recommendations in terms of the size of the pipe and how the service should be provided. One recommendation that they, they had was relative to the existing sewer main that's located within Main Street. Um, the plan that I have, uh, this is the utility plan, and this is sheet number six of the plan set. And this sheet also has a revision date of March 25th, 2024. Um, one recommendation that the Remington and Burmick had in their letter is that the applicant should consider replacing the sewer main, the existing sewer main, and lateral connections and cleanouts, or the existing main that's located from the intersection of Central Avenue all the way down towards Park Avenue, which is the easterly most manual. The applicant has agreed and will comply with that recommendation. We're proposing to replace that entire sewer main, which is currently an old, um, veteransified plate pipe with, um, scheduled 35 PVC pipe. Um, all of the existing utility connections, sewer connections into that main, they're also going to be replaced in lieu of this, a single one-way cleanup, which generally allows you to insert a snake in one direction along the lateral. Remington and Burnick are recommending two-way cleanouts, which would allow you to clean both towards the main from the street and towards the house from the street. The applicant is in agreement with all of those recommendations, and we have revised the plans accordingly to reflect those changes.
So not only are we improving the stormwater runoff on our property and the drainage through the property that benefits the borough, we're actually agreeing to improve that sewer line, um, that affects not just our property, but other properties to. um, that affects not just our property, but other properties two hundred and fifty feet from our property, correct?
Correct.
That's a, that's another benefit to the, the public that we're, uh, granting this relief in this proposal.
Correct.
Um, we can go through the board professionals' reports. I'd like to start with Mr. Troutman's report on traffic and the way we've configured the, um, loading area and the parking. So I think Mr. Troutman's report started substantively on page two, paragraph two. Um, he essentially agrees with our calculations that we will not generate a significant increase in traffic to the area, correct?
Correct.
And then number three, he agrees that the parking supply shown on the proposed plan meets the parking requirement, correct?
Correct.
And number four, he indicates that the proposed plan satisfies the New Jersey residential site improvement standards for sure that are parking requirements, correct?
Correct.
And number five, the revised plan provides a backup area, turnaround area to facilitate vehicular existing exiting movements from the electric vehicle and ground level parking spaces.
Correct.
And number six, essentially indicating that the revised plan provides improved onsite circulation for delivery and trash trucks to access the loading zone and dumpster pad. And that there's an adequate pavement area available for, um, box trucks to enter and exit the loading zone and dumpster padded areas, right?
Correct.
And the last thing was deferring to, um, the municipal fire official on issues of access and circulation for fire apparatus. But, um, I don't think there are any other comments that we need to address from a traffic standpoint.
Right. I, I mean, I would just comment that losing that unit while we've lost the, the setback variance and that important element from a traffic standpoint. I think it loosened things up a little bit on the site. I had some concerns about pinch points and things all working and it just opened up the internal, uh, outside state in the amount of things that work out.
Thank you. Then Ms. McManus's report of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. There are a number of items. I'm going to skip over all the ones that say satisfied because that's really great. I love the word satisfied. And if I miss anything, please, uh, come back to me, but we, um, on four point eight, the fence detail indicates a five-point-five foot tall fence and we're asking for six feet. We'll correct that with consistency. It's really where you start your venture, correct?
Correct.
They will, uh, provide the bicycle racks, uh, details as a condition.
Correct.
That's four point, sorry. Um, four point eleven regarding the um, four silky doglets are proposed in the planning schedule, or however, they're not depicted on the landscape plan. We'll clarify that in this feedback, correct?
Correct.
And there's been a request for the detail of the patios and the privacy fences, which we can provide. Um, and on comment four point one three, we're not proposing the planters now. They're not on the plant, so we don't have to do anything. Um, comment five point one, again, we'll label the silky doglets and then, uh, clarify those landscaping issues. And five point six, the foot candle values are not depicted between the rear of the residential building and the western property lines, suggesting no building mounted lighting. Can you provide, uh, testimony in the perspective of that issue?
Certainly. So we do anticipate having, um, within that rear part of each one of the units at the one wall-mounted light. And we anticipate, speaking to the architect, that we're going to use more or less, uh, light fixture that's been complemented the building. Um, some of the newer LED fixtures that are more cylindrical, that are downlight. One, one will be installed adjacent to the doorway along the rear of each one of the units. All of the requisite foot candles calculations will be added to the plans as part of any future revisions.
And we will also provide a detail.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm going to skip over six point five because Mr. Kyle will provide that testimony. And I'm going to skip over the planning testimony because Mr. Block will present that testimony. And I think generally we're, if your report is acceptable, I think we addressed everything that I needed to address, but all the other issues, I think.
No, I agree. All of my comments we've identified, uh, in terms of satisfied, except for those handful of items that seem to be.
So then Mr. Clerico's report, um, I know there were a number of issues that it, um, were, um, raised prior to our most recent submission. We haven't had enough time to review um, our recent submission, but can you just go through the, the major issues and how we address them? Well, let's take them in categories because there were, there were questions regarding the utility layout. Let me back up, do it in order. Um, there was a question regarding the intention to subdivide. I think we already testified, we provided testimony that's not our intention to subdivide or to create separate lots here that we're going to manage the exterior areas by way of an HOA. And that the provision of those HOA documents would be a condition of any approval satisfactory to the board professionals. So I think that addresses those, um, you know, we'll have to have easements and, and common area easements and easements for the, the unit holders, but, um, we'll provide that as a condition of approval. And with respect to the commercial space, we've removed the signage saying it's yoga because we don't know, we testified to that before that we, that was just a representative of a possible use. But we're going, we propose the cafe on the one side and any permitted retail use that's allowed within the zone on the other side, whatever that might be. So, um, there is not, it isn't necessarily going to be yoga. Just to clarify that, um. And Eric, we, we dealt with the EV marking spaces. We provide those details, correct?
Correct.
We, um, revised the handicap ramp to reduce the slope to seven point nine percent, correct?
Correct.
Um, we dealt with the turning movements of the trash and delivery trucks.
Correct.
And, um, we we already provided testimony previously about the refuse removal coordinated with the trash hauler. Loading and unloading will not be permitted when the dumpster schedule to be, correct? That's with respect to how that we deal with the truck turning template.
Correct.
We have no problem with conditioning the approval on the granting of Title thirty-nine jurisdiction. The again, the ramp grading has been revised to reduce the slope to seven point nine percent. You already testified as to the stormwater management, how we dealt with it, and this, this stormwater management is fully green infrastructure, correct?
Correct.
So although the ordinance provides for, um, a reduction in the impervious coverage, permitted impervious coverage to fifty-five percent, if you don't do stormwater in the midstream. Um, we're at seventy-five percent because we are meeting all of the stormwater management systems, so we get the benefit of the seventy-five percent, right?
Correct. However, the, the ordinance permits up to seventy-five percent, but the applicant is only proposing sixty-two percent.
And the sixty-two percent is actually less than what's existing on site now.
Correct.
You've added the details of the basin access. You provide testimony with respect to access to the basin.
So as part of the plan revisions, what we have done is at the end, which would be the northerly section of the parking area in front of the, uh, townhouse units. Access into the bottom of the detention basin will be provided. This hatched area that's, um, honeycomb shaped. This is where the detention basin access will be located and it's ten feet wide. Um, it's going to be a stabilized access consisting of a stone base with topside on top of it. So once it's planted and it grows, it'll look like it's a part of the basin instead of a gravel drive. Um, I've used it, this particular detail in other places where normal maintenance of light landscaping equipment, long moors and so forth, needs to get into the basin. This seems to work well and it doesn't leave ruts or it doesn't leave, uh, hard-looking surface within the pond itself, within the basin. Um, this area extends from a depressed curve at the end of the parking lot into the bottom of the basin. So any sort of equipment or personnel that we need to get into the basin for maintenance of any of the landscaping or other features within the basin, they can certainly utilize that access.
And one of the other comments was previously for us to put a fence over on the basin, uh, to prevent people from going there, and we've added that to each of the plans, correct?
Correct. In addition to the board-on-board fence that will surround the perimeter of the property, what we have done is to add a, uh, split rail fence on the northerly side of this end unit. And the split rail fence is your typical two-rail, um, fence, um, with openings in between. And the purpose of that fence primarily is to provide a hard separation between the actual pond area and the end of that unit.
Um, there were specific comments regarding, um, elevations and perfect rates and consistency, and you tidied all of those, correct?
Correct. The plans in the report has been reconciled.
And, uh, four point six, to the stormwater management report, you corrected the titles and central station and the borough funding, correct? Talk about the HLA. We made specific reference to the revision, um, on five point one point three for Remington, correct?
Correct.
Five point two four, we put the locations of the hydrant along Mind Street. And we're not proposing any irrigation system for the site, correct?
Correct.
Talk about the utilities. Mr. Clerico, maybe it isn't. Question regarding the location of certain utility layout, meaning access. Can you address that issue?
Certainly. So the property is going to be served by all public utilities, um, natural gas, public water from the borough, public sewer from the borough, and then also electrical service. Um, and what we're proposing is that public water and public sewer will be taken directly from the borough system located within Mine Street. And they will extend into the property. And once the utilities have been brought onto the property, individual laterals or service connections to the mixed-use building and to the, uh, multifamily or to the townhouse building in the rear will be provided to serve each unit. The, both the water service and the sewer service will be handled the same way. Um, the borough is going to require one meter for water service for the entire property, and they're going to require a heated meter box. The meter pit is going to be located within the parking area. What we're proposing for electrical service will all be brought on the ground. We anticipate the main service being brought in from Mine Street to a transformer pad, which we're proposing adjacent to the building and the dumpster enclosure. From that transformer pad, service will extend into the mixed-use building. And service will extend diagonally in a northerly direction towards the front of the condominium units, of the townhouse units. And from that point, individual service into each, each unit will be provided. Similarly.
For a second. Eric. I, you know, E and L Bank Leaf Engineering. I'm just wondering, do you need a TWA permit for this from DEP?
Yes, we are going to need a TWA permit, um, for the sewer main extension.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ian. Finally, natural gas will also be brought in from Mine Street. Um, that service will extend down the driveway or the main entrance into the site, and then individual branch or service connections into each unit will be provided. And those are the utility services that we anticipate for the project.
I think that, uh, there, there's nothing in this clerico's report that we wouldn't agree to as a condition of any approval, correct?
Correct.
Um, and I spoke to Bob earlier this afternoon, and he said that, you know, while he didn't have enough time to prepare and submit a report, that he was pretty comfortable with everything in there. If the board got to such a point where they were ready to vote on this application, um, just to make, um, complying with the outstanding items in his March ninth report, uh, conditions of approval.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's it for engineering.
Well, okay, Ian, um, I'm normally going to use, just made a comment, but is, is there anything whole specific on what you just said that you'd want to comment on right at this time? On the testimony?
Um, they, they touched on all the items that were outstanding in Bob's report. Yeah, I, I don't have any specific concerns to convey to the board. Um, like I said, um, he is um, satisfied that the board could come to a vote if they feel that they're ready to do so. And that he would have no objection to it.
One thing I didn't hear in the testimony, and while you're on, I can ask both of you this question then, and, um, item one point or from the, I think this is their response to both flat, one of them for April first, twenty twenty-four. Gold, gold, bone, veil, engineering. We have that, isn't there? Sorry, golden. Um, you didn't, you didn't reference these in your testimony, the items of the drainage easement and the type is mentioned, but also the cover on the sewer main. It says no comment, but I would have thought would be in the comment. I'm like, do you have a comment on that?
No. So certainly relative to the drainage easement, RSIS requires, depending on the depth, that public easement should be anywhere from twenty to thirty feet wide. Um, the existing sewer easement along the easterly part of the property that extends from Mine Street to the northerly property line of our site of this property, that easement is only ten feet wide. And then similarly, the easement that's, the applicant has acquired through the adjoining, the neighboring property that fronts on Bonnell, where the sewer, the stormwater sewer will extend. That easement, given the location of the existing building, that easement cannot be twenty feet wide. Um, so that easement is also less than twenty feet. So that's one of the RSIS, RSIS, RSIS exception that the applicant is seeking. Secondly, relative to the cover on the, um, sewer main, thirty-six inches is required, um, we're proposing slightly less than thirty-six inches, uh, primarily because if we were to provide thirty-six inches of cover, the end unit or this last unit of the townhouse is going to be part of the pump station. Um, I do feel that having slightly less cover, the system is still going to be compliant in terms of minimum slopes to ensure that all of the solids move through the system. Uh, PVC pipe schedule, SDR thirty-five, which is what the sewer main is going to be constructed with, and schedule forty PVC. Having thirty inches or twenty-four inches of cover on that pipe is more than adequate to maintain the stability of the pipe without any potential for damage. So.
All of which I understand what you're saying. However, if the plumbing code, if you can't get, we can't grant a waiver for that. So if you can't get that through construction, you won't be able to construct that.
So in terms of the sewer main, uh, the jurisdiction lands with, lies with NJDEP um, for any sewer main extension and cover requirements. If for some reason the plumbing, we cannot obtain a waiver if it's necessary from the plumbing group for the end unit, then we'll have to modify the design to include either a pump station or some other methods of providing the, the respective cover.
Well, we'll, we'll have to comply one way.
Well, I just wanted to, I don't know, just to make a comment, so by the way, but I don't want any commentary. I don't want any complication down the line when they can't get approval for that pipe.
And that was my reason for bringing up the DEP approval in the first place, that they are going to need to satisfy this one way or the other.
That is, we're not asking the board to grant that, but we have to get it from the DEP.
Well, what changes would it make to your, other than you'd have to provide a pumping station, other than provide 3 feet, how do you say it? Because you'd have to sink the whole pipe down, I don't know.
No, so what would you think so then? So the individual pump station can be located and these systems are fully underground. They can be located within the driveway or the pavement area in front of each unit. And there's going to be a section of the sewer main that meets that 3 feet, 36 inch cover requirement. The manhole at the end, so currently we have a manhole that's within the driveway of the last unit, the northerly most unit. That manhole would shift to a location where we have at least 36 inches of cover on the pipe. And then this end unit, that manhole essentially gets replaced by a pump station that would pump into that manhole.
It just seems like a reasonably it looks substantial, I'm afraid to use the word, but reasonably, just right, come on.
We can incorporate the board's comfortable, some sort of a condition where if they can't satisfy that pipe requirement and they need to make some changes with pump station incorporation, that even work with the board's engineer to approve, find amendments relating to that, provide that it doesn't change anything else. Something along those lines. So meaning we'd have to make sure it's not a structure, which I don't think it does do with any sort of setback requirements. If something did need to be changed and there was some impact on the relief that was granted, then they'd have to come back with the board. So now I don't even know if that's possible. It's my outside mind.
Yeah, I mean, that's acceptable. That wouldn't ordinarily be the case.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, in any type of application where there's outside governmental agency approvals, if there's substantive change required as a result of an outside governmental agency approval, you, if it triggers a substantive change in the plan, the board professionals would say this is something that you have to go back to the board. So it's not any different. That's why Mr. Hill, I think, raised the issue that we do have to vote before this be for TWA permit.
I'm just wondering whether it would have been useful to provide, or it would be useful to provide, almost an alternate A. If you can't get approval on that region's coverage, you always provide option A of this layout, you know what I'm saying?
With the question, I guess the question we're coming up with is technically would it only require one pump for an individual home or would you need more pumps? Or if they tend to deepen the pipe? Same thing we said, we should be individual. If there's government pumping, it could be to the house, council, community, which they may have through its community, if those need.
So what I anticipate is any requirement for a pump station is only going to apply to that end unit, just for the one unit. And essentially the pump station would go where the manhole is right now. And the manhole would probably shift into the unit, the next unit to the south. So.
Would you feel comfortable that you could, you could ask for that layout? I'd say we're comfortable if we had it in our set, you know what I mean? But like if you showed where the alternate location of the manhole would be and what it would be and just the section of what the pump would look like. Because that's, that's still substantial, but it's reasonably a change to what's shown here, that things happen.
I think what, I think the way we approach it is we cannot require an outside agency pool that's higher than ours in order for us to grant our approval. So clearly DEP is a higher agency, so we could condition our approval on them getting that to everybody. If they would like to take the risk that that approval may not be granted and there may be a substantial change that would bring them back here, they could certainly provide us with an alternative and you could technically approve that both.
That's, and that's the driver, what I'm saying is that that would say, might say term in the long, it might not, but are we?
Does that mean that creating an underground pump station and moving the manhole over a unit, so to speak, that that's a substantial change to the plan?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's where I was just going to go because it's it affects nothing on the layout here and what is appearing on the plan above ground. It's just how you handle the sewer for that last unit and whether it's you need an underground pump station to get the stuff up a little bit or whether it's okay the way it is, it really doesn't affect the plan from.
That is a change that they can work with the board engineer to do unless something else changes. So yeah, I think it's, I understand what you're getting at. And if for some reason, once they realize what the situation is, they do need to make some moving around, then yeah, that's the risk that they would be taking. They have to know that there was some significant planned change.
But with that being based upon, do you think we're approved or not approved? Seeing as there are improvements in the sewer line?
Yes.
That's why you have an outside governmental agency approval requirement that we need, we need to comply with them, which as Mr. Zinski said, it's the higher authority. If, if they came back and said, you know, you need to move that building 10 feet and it's going to trigger a variance, then we're back before the board. But this is, well, you know, you might have to put a pump station underneath the ground and move the manhole 15 feet. That's, that's not a substantive change.
We can agree.
I mean, I, I, I hear you say, I'm comfortable with the fact that they presented a plan, we know they need outside approval and if and if DV says you gotta move the building 10 feet, then they're going to come back for it. I mean, they're off, they're going at risk. I think the alternate A, alternate B kind of situation is.
I was just trying to say, I guess that was my mindset. Yeah. I just want to check with Ian. Do you, can you weigh in on that for me as well? Whether you feel that that alternate would be a suggestion or whether we leave at the risk for the DV permit? Yeah.
Uh, yes, I mean, this happens quite frequently in, you know, very different types of applications. The DEP outside agency approval is something that they can't get away from. So the issue will resolve itself. And if it doesn't, then they have to come back to you with an alternative.
Right. Do you consider that alternative that they suggested, that's not substantive, it's not substantive, it's reasonable, it's a reasonable check.
It is reasonable and, you know, I mean, there's places with grinders, grinder pumps in their basements all over the state, so. These little booster pumps are common.
Yeah, okay, then that's, we're just raising that as a concern for you, I guess. I don't know, do you answer my question? Okay, so professionals. Thank you. Then the board, anybody on the board have questions for this witness?
No. Yeah, Eric. Where on, if we go to the top of, you can go to like the Google map of the property, what it is now.
That's actually, well, that image is actually in the onset, so I don't have to refer to it specifically in the set.
Either, either way, where, where would be the net positive of 4% of less impermeable coverage? So we're going to have 4%, like where, where am I seeing this on? There, so here, there's the grass, there's trees, you know, there's all that. Where am I seeing a 4% positive?
Reduction.
Yeah, reduction.
So this map is probably not the best to look at because you've got the canopy that's essentially covering a lot of the asphalt and gravel that's not shown here. What we have is the survey plan that this survey was done in the field by our office. And it shows you existing Burkett Hardware store, appliance store that's shaded here, the small building adjacent to it. This is the asphalt parking area. Down in here, there's a concrete swale that's shown on the property. This is a relatively large gravel area on site. And then we've got more asphalt at the back of the property here. There's a loading dock or what used to be, I think, the runnits of a loading dock, another garage that's back here. And then likewise, we've got a asphalt driveway that goes in between these two buildings that's on the property. So individually, what we normally do is just tally up all of those various coverages and their the, the actual calculation and calculation is provided on this sheet. That actually works. So here we have the various coverage for the buildings, pavement, concrete, gravel. And what it adds up to a little over 22,000 square feet. And then to the right of that, we've got what's being proposed after we raise everything that's currently on the property. And that's about a little over 20,000 square feet.
You were mentioning about the reduction in water runoff. You know, you know, we would ask me these questions, how, how is that? Explain to me how that was calculated. When you do a reduction of water runoff of this proposed plan, how did you calculate that? Help me out here to understand that.
No, certainly. So what we normally do is look at the site as it currently exists, which RSIS permits. We look at all of the various coverages. So for instance, when you're dealing with impervious surfaces, pavement, concrete, wood areas, virtually 100% of rain that falls on those surfaces will run off. Actually, it's about 99% of runs right off. On gravel surfaces, you have a slightly a little bit less that runs off, but it's almost 100%. It's probably about 94, 95, 96% depending on how compacted the gravel is. So we take all of those various ground covers and we apply a multiplier or a factor to it, which is directly related to the cover type. Lawn area, for instance, you apply, it's a curve number, which would be 74 for different types of soils. And it gets a little bit more complicated and detailed, but essentially, essentially we look at all of those different types of covers and we apply those factors to it based on the cover. And this is all published information in RSIS that everyone uses. And based on those, the multiplication and those factors, it tells us, okay, for this property with all of the various aggregate covers under the existing condition based on the storm event, you're going to have X number of cubic feet of runoff leaving the property. And then based on that peak rate of runoff and how long the storm event will last, we can also calculate the volume that will leave the property. And again, picture if you have a site that's 100% paved or impervious, basically everything runs off or every drop of water that falls from the top. If it's sand on the other extreme, normally you don't see any runoff until you get to like the two year storm and above because pretty much the first couple inches of rain fog infiltrates into the ground. So we apply the same analysis to this property after it's going to be developed. Now, the fact that we're going to have slightly less impervious coverage in more permeable areas gives us an opportunity where you have more water that's going to infiltrate into the ground, which is going to reduce the amount of runoff. And that's directly proportional to the amount of impervious coverage that we have. In addition to that, the green infrastructure, which is the bio retention basin that we have, the way that pond is designed, there's a planting mix that goes on the bottom of it, which is a combination of sand and organic matter. The organic matter can be a combination of topsoil, it can also be compost or some other, some other type of organic matter. That sand layer allows for runoff filtration. So for instance, stormwater normally carries pollutants with it. It'll carry dust particles, erodible material. Once it flows into the pond, those particulates are going to get trapped within that, the surface of that sand mix, sand layer. The way this system has been designed, which is what's required by NJDEP and RSIS, when you're infiltrating stormwater, which is the basic predicate for any green infrastructure, you have to accomplish your stormwater treatment by infiltration. We're going to take a certain volume of runoff. In our particular case, it's going to be, I remember correctly, approximately 12 inches. So the bottom 12 inches, the first 12 inches of water that flows into this basin is not going to flow out of the basin. That's going to infiltrate back into the ground. So that entire volume, that 12 inches over the roughly 1600 square feet that we have at the bottom of the pond, that's actually going to infiltrate back into the ground instead of running off the property, which is what's happening currently. So the green infrastructure provides additional infiltration, which further reduces the volume of runoff from the project.
So would the people on the L Street, would they benefit from this in the sense that I'm wording this where there's flooding on that street behind that property? So I'm thinking to myself, it could as help possible surrounding properties?
Yes. By virtue of, this particular project is almost at the beginning or the headquarters of the stream. So by reducing the amount of runoff, the peak rate of runoff, the stream along the back of those properties on Bonnell is going to see less of a peak flow. So to lower that peak rate of runoff, to lower the flooding within that stream will be. In addition to that, by reducing the volume of water that's going towards that stream, you're further going to reduce the amount of flooding that occurs in those property.
By removing that seventh unit and increasing the size of the detention basin, is that a way of helping that situation too?
Absolutely.
No, I'm okay now.
All right, can I? Could you possibly stop sharing? Um, no, I can still come back to all the people. Anna, do you have any questions for this witness on his testimony? Muted.
I, yeah, I got, I figured it out. I just had, I don't know if this is, if this is for you, just like what's the basic timeline of construction from breaking ground and like what phases, what's the phase, what would the phase kind of look like? Is there, I mean, that could be, yeah, in the perfect world, I guess, right? Or?
We need to get our outside governmental agency approvals, but
Right.
It's to build this all at once, not in stages. We're not asking for.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Anna. Dennis?
I had a couple of questions. One, and it's really for Beth. Maybe I'm missing something on 3 dot 2, the bulk requirements. The minimum front yard, the required is 25 feet, the proposed is 11, but it says no variance and I'm sure I'm missing something.
I think there's definitely something missed, but I'm not sure it's you. Let me pull out there, or maybe Eric could want to show them the site plans.
So I think the simple answer for that is the ordinance permits an average of the adjoining, the front yards of the adjoining lawn. So we have one sort of.
Thank you.
I thought we'd addressed it.
Go on now, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Sharon, sorry to.
So. So we have the dwelling to the west of us, which is this long. The frontmost part of that building is about 2.1 feet from the right of way line. And then likewise, we have the building to the east of us and that's about 19.9 feet. So when you average those two, the required time to reach 11 feet into the 25 feet.
Can I answer your question, Dennis?
Yes, thank you. Another question, I don't know if it's for this, when is, about trees? Is that for this witness? If I have a question?
It can be.
I, just a question, I noticed in the diagram, there are no trees on mine street. Have you considered putting trees there?
So within the landscaping plan, we do have street trees. They're actually.
Okay. Thank you. I missed that. And then the, the only other question, first of all, thanks for addressing the HPC comments, really appreciate it. Will someone go over the materials?
Yes.
For the buildings? Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
All right, thanks, Dennis. Mike, do you have anything? All right. Thanks, Dennis. Um I'm good. Uh Mike, do you have anything?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Hi, I have um two questions. One, I know we did have a lot of talk in all of the testimony tonight and also in previous meetings about the bio retention basins and maintenance access and all that. My question is, who exactly is responsible for the maintenance?
So this project is going to require a homeowners association and per the state rules and regulations, that entity, the HOA, will have to maintain the bio retention basin. It cannot be maintained by an individual property owner.
And then my second question, and I'm not sure if it's necessarily for this witness. I going through all the documentation that was provided prior for this meeting, I believe there had been a concern brought up in one of the October meetings regarding the residential unit that faces Mine Street in regards to the window dressings. And I have not seen anything in the newer documentation. I believe the concern was trying to get, I'm not sure if this actually came from HPC maybe, a consistent look for at least the outward facing. Okay. Then that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Melissa, um and then Dom? Anything from you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So um then, and and are there any members of the public that have questions for the testimony at this witness day? I don't see any online. Anybody in the room? Okay, see enough.
That whole discussion about stormwater, I'm the only lawyer in a family of engineers, and that's my Thanksgiving every
Comment earlier about engineers mentioned, and then people on
You haven't seen my family. You remain on your own from the last time. And which would you like to pull up? I mean, I I'm basically doing there weren't a lot of things that were exterior. Okay, this one does have to be marked into evidence.
May I have the next one as A seven?
If you could describe this for the board, what it is?
This is new, and we haven't seen this. I did this coming just recently, because some some of the things came in a little late again last minute.
The HPC comments specifically that they had given us.
Okay.
It adds a couple of additional comments, and and we wanted to address them to show the question about the materials and stuff, so that's on. So
So this currently is only, we're only seeing this here. We don't have, we didn't have this previous, or is it on? It's not, the public don't have this right now?
If you could describe exhibit A seven for the board, what it is. So this shows two things. It it addresses um the question uh in the HPC about the color of the brick and being a consistent red brick. That's as close as I could get in a rendering. Um as opposed to before, where we had a mixture of reds and browns and things like that. So that was to address that. And then in the upper right-hand corner, it's hard to see, but there's a list of the materials actually written on the project, which is what the uh uh HPC had just just asked for. So I I can, you know, go through that.
If I could, before you do that, just for the record, this was prepared by your office. It has today's date?
It had, it is. They did uh four eight twenty twenty-four.
And is there a title on it, or we'll just describe?
It was on red brick, front facade, multi-use building. So in the upper right-hand corner of that, um it it talks about what materials are used on the project. Um there's going to be a um brick veneer on the first floor. So originally, when we had proposed, it was a meeting that we did not attend, and we had changed our design at that point to have two stories of um of brick and the upper story to be a clapboard siding. Um the HPC had made some recommendations after that, and we had made the changes accordingly. So now this has one story of brick. The brick goes around all four sides of the building. Um that is depicted in the in the full set of plans. So the in the list of the materials, the brick veneer is a thin brick, and it's a can will be a consistent red color. Um the clapboard siding will be arctic white, cement board. Uh it'll be a smooth uh finish, and it'll be arctic white in color. Um the uh trim and the brackets that you see in the cornices and the cornices themselves will be made out of a composite material of Azak or something similar, and the color of that will be white. The canopies that are three of them across the front of the building and one in the rear over the um the doors that go to the apartment. Um those are going to be uh metal with a metal standing seam roof, and that unit will be black. Um the roofing on the building will be um TPO roofing. It's a type of roofing, and that'll be white as opposed to black, and it helps with uh energy efficiency and things like that in in the building. The the same materials that are listed here will be used on both buildings as shown in the the full cell renderings. So wherever there's a basically in in the full set of renderings, wherever there is a uh a multicolored brick, we would be substituting in the red brick that you see here. Okay. So um there was a question by Ms. Swingle with respect to the the windows facing the residences. Um we talked about the look, how we adjusted the windows uh from the prior meeting. In the front and the back? Both? Okay. Um so in in the front of the building, um a couple of things that happened, the the um HPC had some comment about the size of the windows and and uh as such, in the commercial spaces. So one of the things that we did is we, in the original plans, we had individual windows with trim around them, and in this grouping here, we actually grouped the windows together, and we made um the ones that are in the in the intermediaries between the center and the ends, we made those larger. So it gives the appearance, because we're putting two sets of windows together to to that we have one um you know, a more cohesive kind of setup for what the windows are. Um in the original, original plan, we actually had um sliding glass doors. That's that's all been taken out. And we have a situation where we have um a a single window on the ends of each side of the building. It still has a symmetry to it. And then there's uh um there's the middle is single windows. And the ones on the intermediate on the second, third floor are the they're closer together, but everything has an individual window. Um in the, there was some question also about the rear of the building. And the rear of the building is a little bit tricky. The size of this building isn't all that deep, and the stairwell that's required in there, you know, is is somewhat large. So a good portion of the rear of the building, um I don't know if we And this set is what was submitted to the board, so it doesn't have to be much. So when when you look at this, uh on in in this drawing here, you you have the windows in the rear. So the way this, the the floor plan was designed, you know, uh the bedrooms, the living areas, they all face the front and generally on the sides of the building, and they have larger windows to accommodate what that is. Um in this building, the rear of the building on both of the upper floors has bathrooms and and kitchens and and some utility space in there. So it has limited space to put um windows of any size in there, otherwise it's going to conflict with other things that are in the rooms. So what I did is I lined up the windows that we could on the left and on the right. So that what's on the second floor and the second and the third floor line up with each other. In the center, we have larger windows, and basically on the first floor, that's the entrance to the apartments in the back. And then the second and third floor vestibules that go into each of the apartments, and that has the double windows that are that are shown in there. There's a large area to the left of the double windows. That's where the stairwell is, and that stairwell is fire-rated, and I I even at one point tried to put windows into it. It's kind of a nightmare to do technically, but even then, the problem is the way the stairs are designed, they wouldn't line up. They'd be at a half level down, so they wouldn't, they didn't look right. So I didn't, I just thought it was better to leave it that way. Um one of the things that we addressed too is we put the brick all the way around the building, and there are a lot of details, except for the corners go all the way around the building. The cornice is not on the back of the building, because the roofing is a single slope roofing, and it comes out the back, and then you have the gutter that goes along that wall um to take that rain away. So so our original plan didn't have the brick going all the way around the back of the building, but we revised it to include the brick all the way around. Correct. And in this particular picture, you would see it on the elevations in this step, but in this particular picture, the truck is hiding the canopy that is also there that's over the doors that go to the apartments. I think we've addressed everything on the art projection. Is there something else we want to discuss?
Oh, I already wanted to, professionals who may come and ask questions?
Yeah, I have one question, and I'm sorry, I feel like this better be testified to, so maybe you can refresh my memory. Can you remind me where mechanical equipment is supposed to be located?
Mechanical equipment, the condensers and things like that are in on the roof in the center of the building, so they're not near the edges. And we anticipate to have one for each space, so there would be six in total. Matter of fact, if we look at one of the overview drawings, you would see them you can see it here. So in the center of that building, you can see the those with big, the mechanicals on the six-unit building in the back are actually um not on the roofs. They're on the uh
Okay, so just the, just multi uh the multi-story building will have rooftop mechanicals, and I, is it your testimony that they will not be visible from Mine Street and surrounding streets?
So the question there is from what distance? Right, so that, you know, so it would, you have, there's going to be a a two-foot plus uh uh minimum parapet going around, and units are about three foot. So if you were at the base of the building, you're not seeing it. If you were next door, you're not going to see it. I did some quick calculations, and you'd have to be about four hundred feet away from the building before you would start to see the tops of that. So
Will the residences to the rear, not your townhouses, but the single families, will they view it from their properties?
I would think that where it is, the building, uh the the mu- mu- multifamily building would be blocking that.
The townhouse buildings will be blocked, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Are you proposing screening at all on the
We we can provide some screening of those, the the six mechanicals.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I appreciate the the height of the building, and that I think if you're close to the building, I agree. They're not going to be visible, but I don't want I don't want the residences to the rear.
We're we're happy to provide some screening, uh in some condition of approval to the, to your satisfaction.
Great. You're welcome. Jonathan, on that point, you just, you testified that the roof is sloping. What's the, what's the, what's the rate slope? Uh because, and what's the access for maintenance? How are they, how are people accessing those condensers?
So they would, so the pitch on that roof would be somewhere between the eighth of an inch and quarter inch per foot.
Hmm.
Um added the stairwell, there would be a hatch. It's not shown here.
Right.
But there would be a hatch there, and the ladder that would go up for that. I mean, if they had to change those, those units are, because this is a heat pump system, the units are generally smaller than a regular condenser would be.
Right.
Um if something like that had to be done, it would how would we draw it up there? It would be on a small frame.
You testified there was a parapet on three fronts, on the front and on the side of that building, the front facing Mine Street, right? Is there
All buildings have.
Is there a parapet on the top side of the front building? On the backside of the multi-use building? Is there a parapet?
No, that's where the gutters, so that's the single slope going down. The same thing applies on the multifamily building, the back of that building has no parapets as well, and that's where the gutters are for that. You need that for stormwater purposes.
Yeah, I know. I'm just forgetting, but if people are accessing them with stairwell to fix those, you don't have a safety Safety is my button. I don't want to make sure without that.
Oh, that's important. Initially, in those cases, somebody, they will bring temporary railings and things to put across those areas, that there's places where you don't have any parapet agents or
Address in some way, shape, or form.
If if there's we we can put safety screening as part of, if there's screen that would allow for the blocking of We also have on the the multi-family building, the condensers are on the patios, and each patio has a um board-on-board fence that's a privacy fence between them, so there's separation, so nobody would only see what's on your own.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Anybody else, any of the professionals for this witness? No, or any of the board? Um Jeff, will you start?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Anybody, any of our board online? Um I can't see you all, so I'll have to
It's Dennis. Um is there a diagram that shows the landscaping? I I can't find the one that was shown on the screen. Is, which exhibit has the landscaping that shows the trees on Mine Street? I can't find that one. Which exhibit is that?
That's the engineering set of plans.
Yeah, but we again, when you see some last-minute plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That should be
Okay. Thank you.
I know, I guess confusing with all the sentences, I'll say it language. Um yes, please. So Dennis, did you find it, or are you said, is that?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Dom? Um have any questions for this witness?
Uh I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa?
Um yeah, just to follow up on the windows. Thank you for the explanation regarding to the window placement and size. I was actually referring to um, a comment that was made in October regarding the actual window dressings, like blinds or shades, since it is facing a thoroughfare within the borough. We were looking for some sort of consistency, or at least whoever made the comment in October was. And I know there's been developments where they've had built into the architectural plans, like automatic shades or blinds. Would that be something possibly worth considering just to have a consistent, clean look on that mine street facing residential evens?
I have no difficulty understanding, but are you saying something about putting like blinds on the interior?
Correct.
I, I, I'm not really familiar with that before, quite honestly, of a way of telling a tenant that they have to have a certain window treatment. You know, we, we can control what it appears from the outside externally, but I, I, I'm not, I don't know if the board's professionals have anything that they suggested, but I'm not familiar with the way of.
I'm sitting in some buildings, for sure.
Usually you see it on.
We provide roll of lines that are all consistent and rather than having one line green, one thing something.
My thought that I had back in October was that the windows will be consistent as when I was listing potential conditions. Windows will be consistent as recommended by the HPC. But I think that, I, I don't think that was in regard to the, I think this girl is talking about, uh, the individual unit decorations, what she wanted that she.
What, what we can do is we can, um, just suggest was have a slight tint to the windows that's consistent throughout.
Why don't, uh?
Well, I'm getting, I'm getting a no on that one.
Maybe, uh, a couple of things. One, I would encourage the board, the board to think about whether or not you want to try to re- regulate the style choices of your tenants and units. I think that is, uh, has the potential for more staffing. That said, if the board is concerned about the issue, they could, uh, I would suggest rather than putting conditions about what they shall look like, it would, the board might want to consider a condition that requires uh, shades or blinds be installed on the front facing or the, the mine street facing upper story windows. So at least that the tenants, if they want to pull down the shade or blind, they, they can do so. And that would be consistent and that would still allow them to hang, you know, their purple curtains or whatever they might like, so they can see them from the inside of the evens.
Yeah, but I think to your point, um, I think Melissa was raising it because, um, one member of the public raised it at one of the hearings. So maybe I'll ask the board to think about that when we have our discussion, how strongly we feel about proposing that kind of thing. It's verging on overreach and then also how do we enforce it in any case? And what, what, what is there? So let's think about that, discuss what we feel strongly.
I'm sure that concern about trying to, uh, to tell tenants that their, their design choices aren't appropriate and be interested with the board resolution. I think there's a lighter touch if the board would like to.
Right.
Something, I'm just kind of rolling out there that's not directing choices, but directing a covering. Possibly, these are new rentals? Yeah, so possibly in the lease requiring a covering on the window spacing line street. Something, just thinking a little bit, but something along.
But again, it seems like if people want to have open windows, why we don't impose that on any other residential.
Again, just throwing out options for the board.
You know, I, the, the other thing to consider here is that, you know, are the relief that we're requesting is a use variance to allow residential on the first floor in the back building. And residential is a permitted use. That front building is completely compliant and, and, you know, we, you can tell that we are really trying to work with the board on all these issues and style and materials and everything. But, you know, what, what it looks like on the inside is a little bit difficult for us to report.
Melissa, I'll, I'll let the board think about it. We'll be, we can discuss it in our discussion. If anyone will testify, thanks. Um, so is that everything for this public? Is anybody from the public for this witness? Any questions? For this witness and our testimony? Seeing none, we can.
You're free.
Thank you.
You want to keep going?
Well, yeah, you think we'll, yeah, yeah, we usually break at nine. Will this witness be able to give testimony? Then we can either try and get questions in before nine or do the questions after, see how it goes. Let's, let's try and see how, how efficiently we can do this.
We have Mr. Block here and I don't, we don't think so.
Um, Mr. Block, are you, uh, with testimony about to give this evening, this evening, be the truth all through the night?
Yes. Now, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications as a professional planner? Absolutely. Uh, Daniel Block, D L O C H, for the record, uh, with Colliers Engineering and Design. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Third by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Testified before over a hundred planning and zoning boards across New Jersey and I believe I testified before this board.
I offer Mr. Block as an expert in the field of professional planning.
No objections?
No.
Please confirm.
And why don't you give the board the benefit of your analysis with this site, this proposal and how it supports with the borough's map of the plan and zones?
Perfect, absolutely. So, uh, we all know the site is located in the DB two, the downtown business zone in Flemington, uh, located on mine street and central Ave. The DB two zone permits a variety of retail service and office uses with apartments being permitted on the upper floors of mixed use buildings. Round floor units are not permitted in the DB two zone under the current ordinance. So we are requesting use variance approval for the rear building. Residential only with no commercial use on the, on the lower floor. So we need to, uh, provide justification for that D variance, the D one use variance showing the positive and negative criteria. So in terms of positive criteria, we have to show that there's special reasons that this site is particularly suitable for this particular use that's being proposed. I believe we have, uh, a very strong argument here. The site is about three quarters of an acre. It's almost five times larger than the minimum lot area required in the zone. So in order, in order to really fully utilize the site, it makes sense to have two buildings, um, they're having one mixed use building just in the front, you're really underutilizing the back portion of the site. Requiring an applicant to rebuild commercial on the first floor of the rear building, really you'd end up with vacant stores. There's no visibility from the street. So I think what we're proposing here makes a lot of sense. Um, it is, um, consistent with the um, master plan of the municipality. So I think what we have here makes a lot of sense. We're providing a unique, a unique opportunity for a variety of housing choices that you may not have in other parts of the borough. So to provide those townhouse type units along with the apartments, I think you're getting a good mix of, uh, residential units. So in my opinion, we need, we meet, um, purpose A of the municipal land use law. We are providing, um, the public benefit to provide, uh, housing here. We are also meeting purpose B of the municipal land use law, which apply secure safety from fire, flood, panic and other natural or man-made disasters. You heard from the engineers testimony that the project is going to improve this on board one off. Not only on the existing conditions of the site, but the surrounding neighborhood because of the, uh, the improvements that are being proposed in a creative place. Purpose is E, uh, is to promote the establishment of a uh, appropriate population density and concentration that will contribute to the orbiting of the neighborhood. And purpose G is to provide, uh, sufficient spacing and appropriate location for a variety of uses according to their respective environmental requirements. I believe we're meeting both of those, um, purposes. We're providing the townhouses in the back will provide a variety of housing options along with the, uh, apartments above. And, uh, it says that the, the rear building really is not suitable for commercial type uses just because of the lack of visibility. And putting those commercial uses closer to the residence in the rear would really be undesirable. Uh, and then purpose I is to promote the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. I believe we are doing that here. We are complying with the HPC's requirements, recommendations. We're meeting all of the bulk requirements for the zone. There's no, uh, bulk bearings is requested any with this application currently. You're going to get a nice looking building, um, seeing the system that they still care for. And then, uh, purpose J is to promote the conservation of the historic site and historic district. Again, I think we're, we're being consistent with the historic character. So I think we're also achieving that purpose. In terms of the negative criteria, we have to show that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Um, and really what we're looking at is whether there's going to be substantial damage to the character of the neighborhood by what's being proposed. From the street frontage, you really won't see too much of that back building um, from neighboring properties. It's, it's going to be, uh, it's going to fit in. It's not going to look like it stands out. Um, it's going to be designed consistently. You saw your architectural drawings. It will, it will look like it fits in with the, the, uh, character of the neighborhood. So to that extent, I believe we are meeting the, that first part of the negative criteria. Uh, the second part of the negative criteria is that there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan or ordinance. And as Mr. Gruber mentioned at the start of the hearing, the master, the 2022 master plan does specifically address the issues that were being proposed tonight. Um, and did read that into the record, uh, that excerpt from the master plan that talks about how the DB zone, uh, regulations should be amended to provide more flexibility for ground floor apartments. This is what we're proposing here. We'll, we'll still have a mixed use building in the front. I think that achieves the vision and the goals of the DB zone and allowing more of the, uh, townhouses in the rear. We'll just be some more in bill housing in the back. Um, I mean, the purpose of the DB two zone, which is, uh, listed in the ordinance, is to provide for mixed uses in traditional business and governmental center of the borough, which is a transitional area between the downtown business zone and the village artisan shopping zone. Um, so I think we're, we're achieving and we're consistent with that purpose to provide a mix of uses. And also to provide that some additional resonance. The 2022 master plan did go through and look at the boroughwide goals, and I think there's some that are relevant to this application, uh, which is to employ strategies to encourage community and economic development within the borough. So we're developing a vacant site and provide a, a new mix of uses. The second goal is to integrate the residential and commercial segments of Flemington Borough to benefit the entire community. And thirdly is to concentrate retail service and entertainment uses, which best contribute to creating a vibrant downtown that will draw residents and visitors alike to the retail portion of the main street. Um, in the downtown business, one and two zones and nearby surrounding properties. So I think we're achieving that. We are providing some commercial uses that will draw the, uh, draw the commercial, um, shoppers into the area, will provide a space for the tenants to, you know, shopping or use those facilities.
Doesn't this provide a really good mix, uh, and, and a link to Stangle Road and the, and the, uh, retail that goes on in Stangle Road? Um, isn't, isn't having a mix of residential and commercial on this property fitting well with what the borough's trying to do on that area?
Yes, I believe it absolutely does. So you're still getting that nice walkable frontage with the shopping, uh, store windows, but you're also getting an increase in, in the residential density where people that live on the site can walk, you know, Stangle Road. They can walk to other parts of town and, and shop in those areas. So you, you're, you're achieving what your goal is on both sides.
It's fair to say that the, the master plan, um, that was recently adopted in 2022 for the downtown business districts actually recognize that buildings facing a roadway should have commercial on the first floor with the residential, uh, above. But that if a building's not facing the, uh, a roadway, that consideration should be given to allowing residential on the first floor under those circumstances.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. And, and I can read what it said again, just for the record. First floor residential uses in the downtown are appropriate where they do not disrupt first floor active, active commercial uses as such. First floor residential uses may be appropriate where they do not face a public street or where the unit occupies a minimal area to accommodate the residential entrance. So we're, we're still have that continuous commercial portage. We're not in, interfering with that at all. The residential is on the first floor, it's really going to be near that.
And by the design that Mr. Kyle testified to, uh, with the improvements that we made to this from an architectural standpoint and making the back building look consistent with the front building, does that provide a benefit from an aesthetic standpoint?
Absolutely. Yeah, both, both buildings will be designed consistent, so, uh, achieving the positive criteria and, and, uh, it's being consistent with the goals of the master plan.
This is one of those situations on the use variance that we're actually proposing something that is, that is specifically delineated in the master plan as being something that should be considered.
That's correct. Yeah. So the, the master plan being adopted by this board, um, you know, a year and a half ago, recommended that this be adopted into the ordinance. And unfortunately that hasn't happened yet, and I'm not sure exactly why, but sometimes government, government slowly to act on regulations. So I haven't seen anything that the governing body specifically didn't want this, they just haven't acted on adopting the ordinance to, uh, make these changes yet. So.
And, and in the master plan, it was actually a picture of this property as being identified as vacant business space.
Exactly.
Correct?
Yes, yes. So. Um, to the extent that we, we need to show and in case quality of proof under the Medici standard, I believe we do need that still here. Um, we are specifically following the recommendations of, of the master plan. Just hasn't been adopted into the ordinance yet.
Anything else?
So, uh, that's it. Um, I can summarize just by saying I, I believe that this variance can be granted. Um, because the site is particularly well suited for this proposed use. The proposed use is consistent with many of the goals and objectives expressed in the master plan. There's no substantial detriment to the public good, no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the ordinance. Uh, and the most developed applies 100% with the bulk requirements of the zone.
One other thing that in terms of benefits to the public, not just for stormwater, but the sewer line improvements of 250 feet, and not just for this site, but, um, as requested by, uh, water and sewer department, that provided public benefit, that will also provide a public benefit to, to, yes. I have nothing else for the Eastern block.
Thank you. Professionals?
Board had some deliberation to do. I had to leave, I'm saying, I think regarding windows and use. I think that's. Yeah, but, um, but my, my concerns have been addressed, the variance have been addressed. Address the, uh, the only variant, now that the variants.
I had one for you regarding our, when we suggested that, I thought the living above a, a commercial use. When we kind of introduced that as a possibility within these zones, I thought we were kind of thinking of where there was a code commercial use and then somebody could use the top part of the house type situation to live in. Whereas in this situation, it's being used to create a building that's two stories above. Is that consistent in the way that we would think? Or in the, um, surveys, it consistent with the way that we wrote it?
I think it's consistent. Um, you know, the building doesn't require plate bearings. And it's certainly very typical for, uh, the first floor in a mixed use district like this. For the first floor to be the only floor that has a commercial use in the upper stories to be, uh, to be residential uses. If you think about, uh, other non-residential uses that, that we might, we might want to associate with other stories. I, I think they can be pretty difficult in today's market. So um, in some places you might see offices on the second story, but I think that's, that's a pretty difficult prospect.
I think maybe I was coming at it with, with having two levels of residential above it, other places just one where it's like a living, that somebody living in. Does that make sense? It was like an artisan idea that we were discussing.
Yeah, we were talking about that. We had that discussion. Yeah, we were talking about that, we had that discussion regarding the BAS statute, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, and that's a little bit different, we were talking, we were kind of playing the, the prospect of having somebody that lives above. That's associated with first floor use.
Right.
Here, I would say this is just a traditional mixed use building located along the line straight with independent commercial uses and independent apartments.
That must be what was in my mind, I think.
I would point out that that's not even the relief that we're required, because honestly, that's what's, what's permitted, is to have. A commercial on the first floor and residential on any floors above, so your zoning ordinance and master plan, see, that's a permitted use.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I was trying to reference back to a conversation that this board had had, right, let's just refresh my memory. Okay, other members, another professional questions for this witness then? All right, let's go to our board members online first this time, Anna, you have anything? No, Dennis? Uh, Don?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, Melissa?
I'm good.
I'm nice.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any members on the public have questions for this witness, I don't see any online, nobody in the room, okay. Thank you. Would this be an appropriate turn for us to take our break, and then we can, do you have another witness?
I have no other witnesses.
You have no other witnesses? Well, let's take a few minutes break and then do your closing and the next.
You have to open up too.
And I've written that down, I was just thinking about.
Don't worry, we got it.
Let's have our break, okay, we have our break? Let's do it until nine o'clock next week. Call the roll please, Anna, it's victory.
Mr. Champion?
Here.
It's given, yeah.
Here.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Ms. Samino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Apple?
Here.
Dennis, can I just confirm you then?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski, here. Engineer Ian Hill? Ms. McManus, here, Mr. Trump.
Here.
All right, thank you.
So you need to, you know, to give any testimony.
All right, can we put some motion to open up the round? Just open up comments, right, public. Does anybody, member of the public either online? Please raise your hand on the raise hand function, or in the room have any comments on this whole application?
We do have the attending.
Oh, there is a hand.
Lowering to talk?
Yeah. Okay. So Brian and Robin, show your hand, you have your hands raised.
Good, good evening, I just wanted to double check what the material of the fencing, the perimeter fencing is gonna be.
And we, we have, we don't know. Can you just state your name and address, please?
Sure, it's Brian Beckenbaugh, 22 Benell Street.
It's gonna be solid wood fence. Staggered, staggered, staggered wood fence. Gonna be staggered and clipped at the top, they call it doggy.
Okay.
They identify you for the record, we're having.
No, it's easy to say it. It's gonna be a staggered wood fence and dog-eared at the top, that is, and it's very attractive.
Is it going to be like wood, or?
It's gonna be stained, it's gonna be stained.
And we will incorporate a detail of that fence on the plan.
And we will incorporate a detail of that fence on the plans, as a condition.
Thank you.
Right, is that, is that, is that, answer your question, you have any other questions? Brian?
No, I'm, I'm all set, thanks a lot.
Thank you for being patient, every question.
True.
All right, so we see no others?
I wish to close the public hearing.
All in favor, can we do it that way, or do we need a roll call? Do you all in favor to close the public session?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Is anyone opposed?
Oh, is anybody opposed to closing the public session? Hearing them? Um, okay, board discussion, no one in motion.
I need it, I need it. It should be very quickly. It's a pleasure to represent Mr. Baffey, because he's one of those developers who make my job a little bit easier. Because he's very willing to work with a board to come up with the best project, and that's what we've really tried to do here. From where we started, we came up with a plan that we liked. There were some concerns raised by the board and the HPC with respect to some of the architectural features. We went back to the drawing board and came up with a, a very attractive building that I think the HPC even. Likes and it's more in keeping with the historic nature of, of the borough of Flemington in this area. We could tell that there was concerns from the neighborhood with respect to a seventh unit and it being so close to the rear yard. We eliminated one unit, which is a big deal for a developer to remove a unit that he was hoping to develop. And we pulled everything back and came up with a better plan that. Your own traffic engineer said by doing that, we freed things up to make the access through the site much better. We eliminated a variance and we came up with a plan that all we need is a D1 variance that is. Consistent with the recommendations of your master plan, it even has a picture of our old building there. So I, I think we've done everything that we could to work with the board and address the concerns of the public on this application. I think it's a very good project for Flemington, it melds in well with Stangle Road and the uses there. It's gonna be attractive, it's much better than what's been there, that's a vacant building. With a lot of concrete and pavement and nothing else on it. So we would ask that you grant our application for use variance approval subject to the conditions that we've all agreed to. And preliminary final subject approval.
Thank you.
Before you vote, before you deliberate, if there are any concerns about this application or anything that you think that the applicant hadn't addressed, we invite you to. Ask us to present that testimony for you. Because, you know, we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of this money. Bringing this application before you, so we, we don't want, we wanna meet all of your questions.
Okay, so, to the board, do we need to discuss before we have a motion or does somebody have a motion they want to raise now?
It's better to make a motion.
Okay.
So I'll, I will move to grant preliminary final and the D variance subject to conditions.
Unless we're fine.
Okay, so, let me go back, so now we did have a number of different hearings on this, so I'm gonna go through the conditions that I identified, some of them may have been. Deemed unnecessary based upon changes to the plan, so, jumped out if I missed something. The O and M manual with regard to the basin must be recorded, and a copy of that draft reported document provided to the board's professionals for.
Sorry, Mr. Trump, while that's going on, do you wanna put this thing like next to you?
I'm thinking that might, or do I even take? Both first floor units in the front building will be compliant commercial spaces. And I'm guessing that that just really related to the proposed uses of those commercial spaces. The HOA docs and any condo docs must be submitted for approval. Review and approval by the board's professionals. We do not need a subdivision. I, lighting as built study shall be provided to confirm the intensity and foot handles. No foundation of the pole mounted lights will be exposed. Truck turning templates as per Bob's comments, clearly trash area, I'm assuming that's been. No loading for certain time in the area adjacent to the first condo unit, now that's been relocated. I don't know if the board has any reason to impose time limits on that, so I think that is probably a non-issue.
No, I, I think it got resolved by the bridge option, very disinterested. And the stuff that Jay was talking about earlier today about turnings.
Was that, right, I know, I thought, I saw it, just, I think I looked at some of that, yeah.
The applicant will utilize a private collar for trash recycling pickup and schedule pickup support anyway. No staffing or standing in the driveway access area. Title 39 jurisdiction, they testified to. I had the increase aside the buyer retention facing the satisfaction of the board engineer, we've increased that, he's reviewed that, that's what China's factoring. Obviously, one of the conditions we're going to comply with, including all contaminants within a board professional reports. The HPC as well as. The water and sewer to the extent not changed by any condition of the resolution. All necessary, governed by the approvals of any upside improvements, if any, any necessary third party agency approvals. Stormwater management easement access of easement across lot 21 to be dedicated to the borough, if you still need that. Cannot exceed, any fence cannot exceed the maximum height permitted, even with the addition of fill. We have a six foot, we don't have a six foot fence within any required front yard, so that, that puts away. Compliant with the city approvals. Revisions to the plans, if any other structure required on site or planning amendments required by the power company.
Let's get over again, I'm sorry.
So. Yeah, so, there was, I guess we may need some approvals from the utility companies, and if there's any. Changes to the plans that may result from that approval, obviously you'd come back here, same thing as with D.
But I think the testimony that Mr. Rube ran gave earlier today about underground electric, and I think that. Was getting at the issue that was raised on the.
Any other structures required as a result of that.
Question of.
We couldn't find the locations because of the other buildings, and I think Mr. Clark was really adamant about, wait a minute. You can have electric over here, water over here, how is it all gonna fit together? But I did not hear that at all, I did not read that at all, Mr. Clark.
Okay, so, it is why it's, I, I think that might have actually been resolved.
Okay, so I'll just put to the extent necessary, just because Bob's not here, and we are going to indicate that. The changes to stormwater management are satisfactory, again, to the extent that the comments within Bob's report are addressed. Sorry. No parking directly in front of the property frontage to ask to conflict with any wider site issues.
My spots were removed.
Landscaping in rear yard area, the satisfaction of all professionals, are we okay with the landscaping, or? No, I don't know that we need a separate condition, because my report includes comments regarding the landscaping, gotta sort of incorporate those. We got D P. The lighting will be shielded to the extent necessary to comply with illumination and trespass requirements. Just the fence so as not to disturb the roof systems and mature trees of adjacent properties. Where the fence is proposed is satisfactory and does not.
Talking on the north side of the property.
It's very tight to the, to the.
I don't think that's a problem anymore, because they were viewed.
No, I think that's the side with the parking, because then the fence is right on the property line, or?
It's up around the east side.
Yes, yes, east side property, it's quite tight.
Oh, yes, I see.
Whether, whether that affects any of the plantings. Remember thinking it was really tight now.
For the next meeting. Plans must be revised to depict the concrete patio at grade. Off of the sliding doors, the six foot high and six foot long probably fence, have the plans been already revised to address those issues? And the six to 10 foot deck over concrete patio, no stairs between them, so all that's been revised. Same materials and colors as the front building, we heard testimonies to that tonight. Unit numbers is directed by the borough tax office. We already changed the windows, which are consistent with recommended by the HPC. Thought deviations on mixed use building and satisfaction of board planner, I think you've addressed that by way of Jane. Part we addressed. Remove the two peaks at the end of the mixed use building. The windows in the rear will be consistent with the style, double hung and button bars, has that been changed?
Yeah.
Arrangement, just like to make it look more.
All right, and we get to tonight's meeting. Talked about compliance with all reports. Just any issues with the fire official regarding access and circulation of the fire apparatus. Of the HOA docs, T P permit. Talked about the relief. Talked about the imminent site plan approval, again, we'll incorporate that with any utility issues as well as the P. I did put this one in myself, and I don't know if it's an issue. We did talk about the four street trees on the front of the property, just to make sure that they're located in places that go under your line of sight and that they'll be. He maintains, but they don't affect that. HOA responsible for maintenance, basin, we have gathering. Screening of rooftop mechanicals to the board professional satisfaction and provide details on the plans. Tell me if I'm getting this right, a safety parapet to issue for anyone accessing the roof to address compressors and, and mechanical equipment, is that the right term?
I don't think it's a parasit, I think your safety screening.
Yeah, but screen. Safety screening, or wasn't there a safety for someone that goes up there to access it?
I was gonna say, no system, like.
I've got this screening on there, but wasn't it?
Well, there was something we talked about when we said that if somebody's gonna go on and do the roof, a lot of times they bring that themselves. And we're not doing it on a full time, because nobody's up there.
We, we agreed to have the screening of.
Mechanical, I've got that.
Yep, which, which would provide a, a barrier to keep.
Okay.
Somebody from going.
The roof access from the stairwell, if you, if you, if you, if you have the door open to the. Side, we don't want them to fall over, then it stops them actually physically getting access, like. Something like that.
It provides a notification, I don't know, physically prevents them.
They're less likely to walk.
The fence adjacent to the property on Benell Street will be solid staggered wood fence and dog-eared at the top, detail will be provided on the plans. And then there's just the window in front covering.
So I will reiterate my motion to grant the preliminary final and D variants and the minor RSIS relief. Subject to all those conditions, but I don't want a condition of the window out there, you wanna fight, I'm gonna fight.
I mean, the, the.
I don't want, I'm not, I, I don't think it's our place to regulate.
All right, does anybody on the board feel strongly from Melissa's comment that we should be, like, you're like, that's a, a.
It's a slippery slope, I'd love to be able to tell my neighbors what to put their window. No, but I mean, it's, at, at this point, I do think it is an overreach. It feels a little weird, even though, I mean, you could just say, put blinds on all windows, and everybody would have the same blinds, the rental unit. It had been done before, not in, we only spoke about it in, we have spoken about it as a board in other properties. Where the windows were very large. Where the windows were very large.
Well, that's okay, like, we, we talked about it in our recent application, when it was. An architectural element of wall-to-ceiling glass, and we were concerned about the privacy aspect. These are typically sized, typically placed exactly where you'd expect the windows, and I don't think anyone's gonna be. Renting that place, and they're gonna go put up some blinds, like, so I think we don't.
My thought as well is even if we do put it in, who's, who's gonna, who's gonna ensure it happens? And we don't have anybody to go, we don't wanna.
That's my, that's my motion.
Alright, you're second.
Alright, so does anybody, I do have a clarification. That I just feel, the parking and this yoga thing that was mentioned in the report. So, given that, we've had all our applications. Where we've had. Somebody's come back to have, have something adjusted for use. I wanna make sure, so, when we're saying it's not going to be a yoga space, and it's, we said, I think in the specific was that we were going to. Keep it to. Allowable uses in that zone. But is allowable commercial use, but is, is yoga not an allowable use currently?
It, it has a recreational parking requirement that would be higher than a generic commercial. So that. If somebody wants to come in with a recreation, a permitted recreational use, it would change the part and calculation, that's what I understand Bob.
That's my worry for the future, that if then they, if they have a situation where the only tenant they can find for that space. Is a, is a recreational use, not commercial use. Then we don't, there's not enough parking in the, in the lot for that use, so are we gonna say. You could not have any recreational uses in those buildings, or?
I think that even if the board grants an approval that permits permitted uses. That approval does not automatically mean that the applicant is entitled to parking relief. So if they're proposing a use that is permitted in the district. But the, the result of that use plus the other uses on the property, the residential, the cafe. Is that the site can't provide adequate parking, can't meet the program ordinance there, I have to come back here for parking areas for us. So by saying you can have any permitted use, it just indicates that they can utilize the DB district for. For occupancy purpose, but it does not make a finding about parking relief. Unless we're, unless we're specifically stating. You know, no parking relief shall be granted, or no use shall require parking relief, some of those lines. I don't think we can do that.
I'm just trying to avoid a whole tension in the future for board when they come with a request and then it's, you know.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's like, and, and. They know what the parking requirement is for the uses, and so if they were to be in a situation like you're describing, the tenants would be like, look, we wanna put in a dental clinic. Like something that's got a much higher parking requirement, right? They're gonna have to come in and get a variance, like, that's just gonna be what it is, like, and.
So that's the question I was asking, because if that's, is that, because that's not permitted usually, so.
So there are, let me just run through some of the permitted uses in the districts, I think that's part of what the questions. Not gonna read all of them, because there are forty two. But it is generally, so apartments on the second floor. It's a variety of retail uses, ranging from a hardware store to a bakery. Apparel store, clothing store, et cetera, it's also offices for finance, real estate, et cetera. Porting studio, legal services. Repair, a variety of personal services. Things that I would classify as personal service, like travel agency. Yeah.
All of those uses you're saying have this lower requirement that we're currently in, is actually.
No, all of those uses are permitted in the district. A lot of the uses, even though there are forty two of them, I would say. I don't know, thirty of them are forms of retail, and they all have the same. But the office use, for example, that's gonna have a different. And so by giving them access. By simply not requiring them to come back and amend the resolution for a new use. You're saying you're allowed to do these uses, but there's no, there's no inherent or implication that they're allowed relief. From the parking requirements, without going back to the board to make that request.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to work out how we word that to make that clear.
I don't think it needs to work. I don't, in my opinion, is, I don't think it needs to work, because I think that we, that they know that there was a forty, listen, forty two permitted uses. And if thirty of them are generally retail, and the, the parking is adequate on site to meet that use. They're gonna be smart about it, they're gonna try to find one of those thirty for tenancy, they're not gonna try, they're not gonna go after something like. I don't know, maybe the bakery's got, don't think the bakery's gonna hire, I don't, I'm trying to go like, what's one on that list? Two restaurants might, yeah, something like that, like if another bread and culture were to go in, or something like that, it's conceivable that that would have a.
Let me, let me ask this. You're not asking for parking variance. If the condition read that any permitted use is permitted on the first floor of the front building, provided that it's compliant with the parking that's provided on site and approved by the site.
Because the concern is they don't have anybody, anything to pull back off, so they conceivably, whether they would or not. And we don't have anything to. Put some teeth into it.
That's what I wanted, a little bit of teeth, that it's understood that although all the uses are permitted in that zone. You don't have parking on site for us to be able to grant that relief in the future.
And they, and they could come in, there's nothing.
We're okay with that condition, as long as there's some ability to, for anybody to come in for a variance.
Of course, so we, we certainly couldn't restrict that.
Yeah, but yeah, we're okay with that.
Yeah, I just wanted it in the thing so that.
It's clearly the intent, we just can't imagine who might be the defendant.
It might be a barber shop, it might be a piercing place, or a tattoo place, you never know.
Who knows? Could be anything. That's the only one that like jumped at me that I wanted to have. Does anybody else have any clarification, or things they wanna add in as? Conditions, thank you. On the board, anybody online wanna. Indicate to me, Melissa or Mike, you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Everybody else shook their head online on the.
Yeah, Karen, we each just make some comment, I mean, even if it's, you know, I agree with what, you know, the chair said, whatever, but. We each just make some sort of comment as to, you know, the application and support for your vote, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't think we were up to that point yet, Karen specifically asked if there was anything to add for the conditions, or. You're trying to, trying to make the conditions the right conditions.
I'm sorry.
You did jump.
Having said that.
Sure, sure, I mean, when you think of applications that we have in front of us. Or, you know, just over the tenure of that age. Very rarely do we have one that starts with. You know, members of the public not liking what they see, HPC not liking what they see, people saying it's, it's gonna flood my yard, so on and so forth. And all that, now again. People have asked, hey, what's going on with that property? Well, this is what's been going on with that property, they, they worked out with their neighbors, they've worked out with. With just about everything, and not to say that you set precedence by, you know. Improving our own infrastructure along Mine Street, which this applicant really doesn't have to do, I think it's a, it's a, it's an olive branch gesture. At best, but. You know, when you have this application started here, you know, I'm making a, a blind sand, and ended here, where there's not many, there's nobody in the public. There's nobody here, no, there's one person, I'm sorry, on, online, so I think it, it basically, you know. What we're getting is what's better than what's there now, which is a flooded yards. You know, and, and a very underutilized site, and when you think of the master plan that calls for. Resident, it's not residential on the first floor everywhere, if residential on the first floor, we're really not seen, so it's behind, because if you think of that site. If you were to reimagine that site as something different, right? Oh, you know what, we, we'd all love to see that whole site go away and be a Trader Joe's. Okay, there's not gonna be parking for that, the amount of people coming in and out, I almost said exterior, like. Meaning a higher use, a, a higher, you know, something that's gonna require more cars putting down mine street. This is sixteen minutes in the battle of, of what's already allowed, right? So I commend the applicant for, I mean, they must have had meetings, pub meetings with every possible stakeholder, if they're down to their type of fences. So. I wish all of our applicants went to this level of detail.
I've got a positive comment.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda just, this is new for me. This application, so I'm just kinda processing and digesting it. You know, I've, I've been informed for my entire life, and, you know, I'm just kind of. Digesting this, it's always been buckets, you know, like, it's always been something that I've seen growing up as a kid. I've kinda just. I really don't know. About happy or sad, you know, it's, it's not anything of that nature, but. This is something that, you know, I'm just here to digest, I really don't have much of a, a comment, I won't provide a good or bad, just I'm more of a in the middle.
I think we. Have taken the time to press the applicant on the things that were items of concern to us, including the discussion on. Extra parking or what could happen in the future, and I think the answers that have been given on the proposed conditions are going to end.
So. I've actually saw this before you go public, because we had, we had kind of a technical review subcommittee. Years ago, resumed call, I think it was like. Me and Bob and Beth and the owner, and I don't remember if it was another board member there, it was a, it was a. It was an early on conversation, and the original, the original idea was not, was way too much, and then. When it came in here, you know, the building on Todd said was, was, was definitely a technological correction, so I'm glad to see the progress, and I'm very happy to see where it's landed. I think that the testimony given in terms of meeting the requirements for the DMO variance have been satisfied, that we've got adequate. We, we've certainly got benefits out, you know, that are to the borough and to the plan, I think this is, as others would say. The kind of thing we wanted to see happen, we're talking about these kinds of adjustments to master plan for first look, you know, appropriate places where first look residential makes sense. We've got these long narrow lots in town, and so trying to find ways to creatively use them and to provide, you know, green housing. Like, so I think anything like housing in this is always a good thing, where it's, where it fits and where it makes sense, and. I did have concerns about seven units and the original design of the bio. They could face a detention system for stormwater benefits that's been fixed, so. I think that that definitely helps go along with, so I, I'm, I'm unhappy with the responses.
Okay, then, we're gonna go to our online members, Hannah.
I mean, I'm happy they put in, it seemed, or, I mean, it shows that they've put in. A great deal of work and from the last meeting and everything, so I really appreciate that, and I would just kind of. Agree with both Todd and, and everyone, what everyone else has been saying, and that. You know, it's a good creative use, because it is kind of an interesting. Kind of layout area. But yeah, I mean, they make it hard to say no a little bit at this point, because they've really put in some work, so. That's what I gotta say.
Thanks, Dennis.
Just wanna, once again, thank the applicant for respecting the HPC comments both times, and. I think the end result is really nice, it's gonna fit in well with the borough, so I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, next on my screen is Dom.
No, just thank the applicant for all their hard work and. Accommodating all the suggestions.
Melissa?
You know, this is, like Brian said, this is a newer application to me. It's clearly obvious that the applicant and did a lot of work back and forth with everyone. You know, I definitely appreciate that. I don't necessarily agree, it's what the borough needs, but.
Lost you a little bit, Melissa.
What was the last thing you heard, sorry?
You said you didn't necessarily agree that it was the right thing to go up.
Right, I mean, but again, you know, the applicant is basing their application off what I believe is a flawed master plan, but that's my personal opinion, so. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, and then at night?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. But I guess I'm the last one, I'm gonna fill myself up now. I, I, I take everybody else's points. I think everybody's made some good points about how much work the applicant has put in, I know this. Application seems like it's been here forever. And I totally, Jeff has been involved with it obviously longer. We've certainly gone through several iterations on. On the project, and it, it does seem that everybody's comments have been. Taken into account, I'm in. I'm in the future with developments like this, I. One of my bugbears on this has been that we, we didn't complete, and then we have. It's been through three iterations, and I'd like to just, not just you, but say to all development that. I'd rather get it right at the first time, you know, like, we can learn from this of what's. What have been the issues that, that the public have raised, and the professional have raised, all that has raised. But that's a general statement as well, not necessarily just to one. Yeah, we can all agree or disagree on whether how much new housing we do need in the borough, but certainly this, this project has listened to. At least everybody's concerns and comments, and I can certainly. So, thank you for that. Does everybody? Then I guess we're ready to vote.
Well, first, we have a second, we have a list of conditions. We have seven members that are voting. And everybody's ready for the poll?
The one who's not voting, just so that they don't get called, so that.
The one that is not voting would be Ms. Twingle. And Mr. Echo and Mr. Show.
Yeah, we did, we've got enough full members.
Yeah, we have seven full members.
So, full members. All the full members are voting. The alternate, so we have to vote, we don't have seven, right? Yes, it is, that's why I asked before we started, because I was thinking we didn't have enough. And I wanted to be sure which alternate we might be using, but yeah, we could have voted the full members. Okay, alright, so I think. Given the motion, we have to vote with all the vote, that's right?
Sure, Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
No.
Miss Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Whitespin?
Yes.
Just Amina?
No.
So, five to two.
Thank you very much.
So, the resolution will follow, and we'll follow in the direction of the guests.
I mean, it is the thirtieth.
Thank you all very much, thank you to the board professionals for your review. I took it this time, I remember. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everyone.
Okay, item ten, chair items.
I know, I'm sorry. You had mentioned it. Sorry, you invented this.
Um, so, I don't have any, um, long line again, let's just go to the, um, unless there's nobody else, anything that wants to raise on the chair.
I had one thing, I'm sorry, I mean, this happened earlier today, and, 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 and only because you said to the folks Facebook, if they remember.
Mm-hmm.
There was, this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna, there was a post on one of these, like,
Yeah.
Facebook pages about a person who called the planning board, and their Facebook name is Joshua, I don't know if that's their real name, I'm just gonna, if that's, you don't know, you could be anybody online, um, and re- related a, a, an experience that did not seem consistent with what I know Eileen's professionalism is.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I just wanna, like, I wanted to have an opportunity to, like, ask what the what was.
I thank you for raising it, within five minutes of seeing it myself, I called Eileen, and you were exactly right, the situation was not as described. I'm, I've gotta be careful, I'm watching the car space, um.
But we talked spoke as well, we have a plan then.
We have a plan.
Okay.
It's related to something that's occurring that we can't yet talk, don't we?
Well, yeah, go on. Yeah, I think we could certainly talk generally, I mean, the situations, and, and jump in, I mean, situations do, you know, happen, I mean, he's very knowledgeable, and they call, and they wanna find out what's going on, but sometimes they also don't necessarily like what she has to say, or lack thereof, or that goes for anybody. Um, I certainly don't want her to be put in that position, not that anyone's gonna listen to me, but, you know, I don't really care what they say. Facebook's over here, it really doesn't matter at that point, but, um, you know, it, it we may be having some situations coming down the pipe where people think things should be handled procedurally differently, um, so.
And not just by the planning board, it's by the whole situation, uh, various situations that people have to deal with, such as construction zoning, zoning.
And just legally.
Permitting, and legally, and things, and so there's let's just say that person was a little stressed, yeah, they took it out on Eileen, which was inappropriate.
I don't know the background.
I, um, I don't need one, say.
No.
I, my.
One of the comments, um, you know, I just feel that, um, this gentleman was looking for, um, some personal, had, um, personal information from one of the other board members, and I just don't think that that's an appropriate thing, um, you know. This is, the borough isn't, you know, here to, to do their personal connection to.
That return. Not a personal message there.
And each member has a historic Flemington Borough email address, which is really strictly for board, you know, information and distribution, um.
Yeah, from what I gathered, Eileen did everything right that she was asked to do, as I think was her job. Um, unfortunately, the person chose to take it to Facebook, which is very, it's frustrating for us, because we cannot respond to that, even though I wanted to defend Eileen on there, and so, but, I was like, no, we can't do that, that, that's a frustrating thing for us, when members of the public choose to do that, and, and raise that, we I, I don't know, I would like to talk to Cara, if there's a way that we can make a public statement, but I know we probably can't, um, but we're making it now, I guess, I'm saying.
That's all, that's all I was asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very, oh, stressful for me that I was not happy with how she spoke about.
Um, it happens. It's, people get frustrated.
No.
Um, and I understand that residents do not understand the process.
Yes.
And, um, that becomes a frustration, um, and then people start talking about their other situations, so it kind of snowballs, and people get upset, so it, it happens, and I don't take it personally, I think in the situation, I think residents get frustrated with, and, as you know, the MLUL is not the most friendly, um, document for residents to deal with, so. It's fine.
But thank you for raising that, because I. Um, okay, our next meeting, as we've noticed, and we moved everything around, is the April thirtieth regular meeting. Right now, the only things we have are a couple of resolutions. If that remains the same, we may have things fall out from these things that were talked about, we may be able to put that on.
I'll have a problem.
Okay.
Is that.
Those, those, those are com.
There may be one, and I'll speak with Eileen, so we're not talking at a turn, but if the one that I'm thinking of may go on the April thirtieth meeting.
That is what we need to raise as a chair right in there, because, um, power has a conflict with something that might come up to us, which means we as a board need to find an alternate attorney.
Do you have a conflict, or is your whole firm have a conflict?
And I thought, I asked Eileen, I know we discussed it.
Even if it was just me, it's, and muted, if it does.
So I thought we talked about it when we did, when we did our new contract, but I don't, I don't think we got any further. So now we need a process to find a, an attorney to represent us as board in that situation comes up, in that particular one.
I can make some suggestions.
Right.
Um, and I could send them over to you, and, and Jim and Eileen.
And I'm presuming, can we do a kind of contract just for that, um, application, whatever comes in us?
Yeah, it might be a good idea to do a conflict council resolution.
Of somebody on.
Which was what we did last year when that had a conflict with Striker, we have a conflict.
So we could approach these and suggest that, okay, then let's move on. But the other one, the one that came up today, you have conflict, you're not conflicted on that.
Right, so it was the other one, like, may or may not be coming in. Yeah, I believe that it will be coming in. Yes, yes. It was an application that was, was filed, um, that, um, fees were, were attached to it. Okay, but I, okay, yes.
So I, I will say.
And they are looking to be on the, if.
If, if, if you need me, I can do a remote on the thirtieth, but if, if it's just resolutions, then.
Yeah, no, I get it, well, if it was just resolutions, though, I was contemplating asking, um, our engineer, if, if we would have anything, uh, relate to our checklist, knowing, and I know you, I don't know if you're aware of what Bob was gonna do on the checklist, like, if we do have a mostly empty, um, agenda, we maybe have some time to discuss some discussion about even part of it, but if Bob can't be ready for them, then let me know as soon as possible, because then we can just not do that then, right, Dan, does that make sense? Yeah, okay, thanks, they'll let me know, um, but otherwise, we'll have resolutions, and maybe these. I don't know how much we can say about them, because I'm not even paying to have them.
Exactly, so I don't want to give so much shit, but it's good we're dealing with this, because I think that's important.
Yeah, and it's, and it's also something I'll let the board know, that is, there's discussions going on generally, that these issues that may, may or may not come up, there's been, there's several of them, and there's maybe a foot to close, not loopholes, but close the situation, stop it, so hopefully prevent it happening too much in the future. Um, okay, let's move to item eleven then, because of the time, um, can I get a motion to audit the bills that were issued? Just five cents, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there was just the one.
Just the one, right?
Yes.
So moved, covered.
Okay. Alright, do we, we need, we have a roll call for that one, yeah, alright, can do the roll call for that.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Samina?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Giffen? Yeah, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
I didn't have a chance to look at it, sorry.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, um, item twelve, we have an eight twenty executive, so, thank you. Um, all right, then, can I have a motion for John?
Someone?
All in favor? Thank you, everybody.
We're gonna have all these on that one.